Fix the date on that.
Okay.
Sure, why not?
Firstly, I move that if Councilman Kaseba joins to allow him to participate online.
That's good. Second, second, then move by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Voice to make Councilman Kaseba do it and electronically when he shows up. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item is the agenda itself again.
I move that we accept the agenda as published with the correction of date.
Date, okay. Second, move by Councilman Loftus, second by Councilman Swafford to approve the agenda with the amendment of change to November tenth. All those on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item is the minutes of October twenty seven.
Move to approve the minutes of October twenty seven, twenty twenty five, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Swafford Loftus, sorry, to approve the minutes of October twenty seven, twenty twenty five, regular town council meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries four zero as well. Alright, next item on the agenda are citizen concerns. Yes.
I want to directly to say thank you for putting the bill note to the public or the mayor. I think it was a good question to exercise, teach citizens the importance of this, why it takes three meetings to do that.
Thank you. I've been wanting to do it for about a year and a half now and finally got changed into it by speaking at a WAM conference, telling people, you need to be communicating.
You guys' votes, if it's the general public, it just kind of goes away.
Yeah.
I wonder what the status of it is, what happened to it, did it ever get filled, did it tide get filled?
Right. I agree with that. Thank you. Your next item? Oh, I thought you said you have two. You don't want another one? This is eleven.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Okay, alright, item, any council concerns? Thank you. So go ahead.
Are we responsible for the pergola at the park, the American Legion Park? That reef.
The sheen goes.
Yeah, it needs attention.
Realized it's about a month ago. We have it on our radar. Put on the twenty twenty seven budget, figure out how to take care of that sheen blowing off.
Might need attention before then, it seems. On the, you know, it comes together kind of in a four sides, kind of like a pyramid. All of the ridges, they're like missing the covers, not all of them, but like a couple of them are missing like a whole section of where it meets up. And so the snow is going to get in there and really do some damage. I have pictures I can show you later.
Kevin brought it to my attention a few weeks ago, said, did you realize that? No, I did not.
Yeah, I don't think it's something we should wait for twenty seven to do, so we might need a little money for twenty six. Yeah.
Hey, any other council concerns? Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, I went away for the weekend and when I came back, the streets dug up again on Shanley. Just curious if you can update us a little bit.
I'm gonna have to go back to my letter to the editor.
They had some issue with quality of the cleanup product on Challowater Main project. Nelson Engineering came up with the owner of Westwood, Curtis, the contractor. Last week, they walked the whole project after the town walked through with Nelson and basically has rejected all of the finished concrete work. Creating those, it's bigger completed streets. Rings, so rings around the manholes, rings around, creating of like curb stops, making sure all the curb stops are operational. Some of the things that just got looked by the contractor and just poor quality of product at the end of the day. Yours in front of your street or in your house wasn't too bad, in front of your lost house was terrible. So they're going to be fixing those things and then like the clean rock getting just strung across surface is going to get hopefully fixed down and great. More as intended. The owner of Westwood was very apologetic and said he would take care of any problems that there may be, give up until it's done right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council concerns?
I'm, I'm good.
Great.
Yeah. You're just pulling that at me.
I did. I just was gonna point out that the, the bill that was being considered, there would have been an amendment down in Cheyenne on the taxpayers' money for associations, which would actually even restrict any elected official from coming to talk to them. It's actually died in committee, so we're happy about that, but it is still, like even the Secretary of State wouldn't be able to go there and speak last time. I don't know what you're intending with this law, but anyhow, just FYI.
Be what they intend to actually.
Yeah, don't even get me started here for our line. Alright. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. We currently have five items on there, the encroachment agreement with one oh eight South Madison, encouragement agreement with nine forty cross trails, but when nine eleven annual subscription renewal, as needed engineering contract with Jorgensen, as well as transportation alternatives program agreement, T D twenty six three oh five. Are there any of these things the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Move by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Loftus to approve the consent agenda as published. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries four zero. Alright. It's way down there. Thank you, seventy four. Alright, I will now declare this as a public hearing for the Fister addition, first amendment. And this is to approve or deny the preliminary plat application for the first edition, the first amendment to the town of Pinedale. Abe, go ahead and dig into this.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I'll do my best to introduce this. This is, again, dealing with a project that has some years to it. The Fister addition, for a bit of history, was considered in two thousand and seven by the town of Pinedale, submitted by Kate Boston, Nimmerstone, Steve Fister in two thousand and seven. That essentially created, I believe it's eight lots on the eastern boundary of Kate Weston's property at the time, which is located kind of right behind the post office, that big agricultural field and the original ranch house. Which ranch was it basically? The Cooley, the Cooley Ranch is what, Cooley Ranch. So that was approved in two thousand and seven. Mr. Fairbanks is representing both himself as well as his parents, who are now the owners of those two parcels that are going to the west and then the lots that are owned to the east. What Mr. Fairbanks and his parents would like to do is to just clean up the lot line and try to pull up the plat here for you.
Thank you.
Give me just a second. So this is the original Fister addition. You can see that lots one through eight extend along the east side of kind of the larger Fister busting property. The lot lines kind of, I'm not gonna say they were random, but they appear random on the map. What they kind of align with is an old irrigation ditch that kind of sweeps around behind those parcels. What Mr. Fairbanks would like to do is to just match all of these properties, the back parcel line aligns with the largest lot, which is lot three. Scroll down to his plat here and see if this. For me, it's out. How to do that? Just took me two, so. Like the different sizes. Maps here, there we go.
Just don't watch your partner.
Alright, so you can see, adjustment is to back up the western lot line, abandon lots one, two, four, five, six and seven and replat them so they're the same size as current lot three. During that, the discussion has really centered around Henneck Street, North Street and what improvements. So this one's the planning is only public hearing about a week ago today. And from town's, town staff's perspective, everything in the subdivision appears to meet the required code and we recommend an approval. The conversation becomes what improvements, if any, are required. Does the extension of Henneck, Henneck Street, it's, does the pavement, et cetera, what, what needs to be completed? So P and Z talked about this for a fair bit of time. We talked about maybe extending Henneck Street out to the end of those. So it matches the property line, but the question becomes whose responsibility is it to build Henneck Street that should have been built in two thousand and seven? Since that meeting, town staff has searched through the minutes. It took a fair bit of time because there was nine months between this being signed by the town and finally recorded at the county clerk's office. And there appears to be a lot of history in between that's not recorded, that we can really find much. What we do know now is that the preliminary plat was approved, subject upon public improvements, including valley gutters and the chip seal road. And then the final plat, I considered, basically said the final plaque can be reported upon recognition of a revocable letter of credit. Well, from the town's as well, and everything that we're aware is under the street there, the water and the sewer were all extended, how the plans intended. All the public improvements were completed except for the chip seal of the road. It specifically calls out chip seal and the improvement. Those were never completed, but the final plat was recorded. I don't know where that letter of credit is. I have to imagine the town had a letter of credit eighteen years ago, but I don't know for certain. That is where the plat is today. So the question becomes, how can it be extended into whose responsibility is each portion of the road? Planning and zoning in their meeting indicated these nubs, you know, we, we, the recommendation from staff and the attorney was to extend these boundaries and make sure it's a clean subdivision. However, it becomes whose responsibility for cost is that when this should have happened in two thousand and seven? Is that the responsibility of the developer now? Is it not? What, what planning and zoning indicated is they don't want to extend the road any further if improvements aren't going to be needed because they don't want to put the further onus on the town, Pinedale, to extend Henneck Street at a later date. It's a very complicated, Ed and myself, Chelsea and the applicant Casey, Fairbanks sat down and discussed what is the best course of action moving forward. The argument from the applicant is these have been public streets for eighteen years, dirt or non-dirt. They were accepted by the town as public streets. There's, they've been so for eighteen years. The conversation from staff is should those be chip sealed as the agreement indicated in two thousand and seven? If they were chip sealed in two thousand and seven, by this point in time, without maintenance, they would be dirt. And so I'm not really sure how to interpret it. I'll leave that up to you guys to discuss of what improvements and where. I do know the lots are the proper size and slot has access off of the street. The gray area that we worked through, myself and Ed and the applicant, was at the very least, the, the subdivider should be responsible for any extension of Henneck Street and any further development on their parcel to the west at the time of subdivision. And Henneck Street and the North Street, the town will, is the town public streets, but the town is not, what's the word I'm looking for, would not be obligated to bring those to public street standard now or into the future. The town may, would not be required to bring it to any current standard at the time of further development. There's no financial long-term cost on the town. I would like to stop dealing with these issues from the days of old, but here we are, as far as the subdivision goes, I see no problem with it. We just need to figure out with the applicant, I would like to resolve who's responsible for what cost and make sure it's reported in this plat one way or the other. So the applicant, the town has a clear path forward after tonight. Ed, I kind of butchered that. There's a lot of conversations in between, but that's the best I can do.
Sounds pretty good.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. I would like, I'm sorry, P and Z did recommend approval.
Yeah.
Of it with the kind of as presented with no improvements.
It's a, I, you know, I feel like we're just digging up all the strangest cases in Pinedale. I mean, is this not like the third or fourth one that we've just stumbled across? Like, oh, this is the only condo in town. Oh, this is the only, I mean, we've had like.
I feel like I've learned that someone will always turn.
Chelsea's done a great job digging them all out. I know she's done.
There's always a new rock to turn over.
So, I mean, this is kind of like odd that we just have a street there.
Well, I recall when that went in, there was, there was a push, it was just set that that, those streets would be extended to what was then the lot line, to the old lot line. Because there was a, the concern was, when this was first discussed, my recollection is, it was solid lots down through there.
Right.
The concern was that if we didn't have the streets extended, we would lose continuity if that property to, to the west was developed in the past. So that was the push, no, you're gonna have street continuity through there. And the discussion went on and why the chip sealing didn't happen, I don't know, but the curb and gutter was put in. The curb and gutter was probably eight times.
Ten X the cost of the chip seal.
Or along the line in the modern sewer.
So I mean, I can see how if you, if you were to subdivide currently with Sandra and Fairbanks own there, then you'd probably want a Henneck Street to go to the house. I mean, you can almost see it in the satellite picture, but like almost a road going to that, right? I could see that, but it just doesn't make any sense to have the road there per se, because we all know we're not gonna take Henneck across Pine Street or Pine Creek, let alone going through.
No, but there's substantial acres there that'd be devoted to town lots in the future. That was a concern. If you have continuity, because we've got some instances, certain in the south, when we run into the large parcels that are already built now, and if somebody wants to develop further south, we don't have street continuity. So that was a concern about that. And I don't, and I don't know what that involves. I don't recall why it was a chip seal or a bond was released if there was one. And if this was, the visitors come in saying, we want to do this, I would say, well then, you build those streets all the way through, all, all the way to the back lot line at least. But the present lot, present property owner, he, though he has continuity in ownership, he doesn't have continuity in obligation really for the chip seal that seat, that street. And they're fairly, from my discussion, the A, the actual cost to chip seal, it's fairly nominal now. If the town in the future ever does anything, you're gonna pay it because that's what we do now. In oh seven, chip seal was still good.
That, that part of town, like where is it at on the rotation of chip sealing?
That four.
You don't have to be exact, you don't, don't rack your brains too hard.
Years ago, it was perhaps three, so it's probably four or five years away from the next chip seal. There would be some finishwork that would have to be done.
Right.
On the road before it can chip seal, but based on it, we paid for chip seal this year. If it was just coming and do a straight chip seal over dirt, we're talking less than five thousand dollars. To do those two roads combined. I can face that with her. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our intention is, I mean, the continuity of roads is obviously the reason we would, you know, have those little, we wouldn't turn those into lots. The reason we want to keep them on the parent parcels, the Henneck Street and North Street, the little pieces right to the west of each of those, is just an easy way for us to, you know, not have to pave, you know, just this little section of Henneck Street, North Street, and there's dirt running in between. We don't, as the present owners, we don't want any, we don't, we like it as dirt. We don't want a chip seal. The town stores snow on, on both of them, but they fill up the Henneck Street one to close it up. So chip seal and then pile the snow on it every year is kind of makes sense. Our main concern is we just didn't want to do this and then be responsible for paving. All, all we want to do is plan on that back, so we don't necessarily have any place to develop anything further in.
Like you're not looking at a north-south road on the back end of those then?
No, but I mean, eventually that's how it would be developed, whether by us or whether, and be by somebody else. So we would want to keep those, you know, little nubs, I guess, attached to the parent parcels and that would be their use. And if the town wants us to deed those little sections, you know, it wouldn't change anything for us. We're just concerned about, obviously, you know, deeding those to the town and being responsible for putting in sixty foot of pavement with their road on your side. It just seems silly. When the, you know, the soap that's in there, you, you know, just get a pile of snow every year. There's no real use for it. It seems like just a waste of, you know.
Oh, present, yeah, exactly.
Well, it would be by the time it got developed, I mean, there's just, it's gonna be piled, a year's with the snow on it, for five years and it's gonna start. Was our contention. So having it done attached to parent parcels seemed like just the easiest way for the town. You know, and then if it really ever is developed, obviously the developer will still own that little section, so it would be their responsibility to bring pavement to the current part of the interstate.
Yeah, that's where I'm tripping now. So if I understand correctly, we're drawing the new lot lines and essentially Sandra is going to benefit from a certain amount of square footage. It's going to be seen with Fairbanks and with the Sandra to make up for all the unequal pieces of property there. I don't care who owns what, I'm just essentially.
Yeah, so a little bit each actually, because I think it's about three that little sag is the difference between the parcel that me and my wife own and then Sandra owns the property.
This right here is the divide.
Yeah, so Sandra will actually take a little bit of land from a parcel it owns and then land from my parcel to add to each of those lots.
But essentially lot three becomes the new straight line that goes north-south, which I think is much better. All on board.
Looks way cleaner.
Yeah, all on board. I guess my question then is, I guess the nubs, if that's what you're talking about. So in theory, if your lot lines then get extended by forty feet, then Henneck and also North Street should be also extended forty feet. So, and you're saying right now that will not be deeded at this point in time, that would be deeded in the future? I mean, I'm, forget about whether or not it gets improved.
I'm gonna go for the recommendation then. Our problem with deeding them now is we would be responsible for paving them and installing curb and gutter, or maybe if not, it doesn't matter to me if you guys are okay with it. We wanted to stay dirt and gutter, you know, from lake government over both of them. What we don't want to do is put in pavement for forty foot.
No, I, I understand that, but I just, I get worried because we go in and we create new lot lines. We probably all agree, for example, that, you know, paving this or chip sealing at this point in time does not make sense. It's not logical. I guess the only question is, is like, who's to say that in ten years, that suddenly those nubs do come to the town? Because now we've dealt with it and we're in a situation where eighteen years later, looking at a problem and we're all gonna ask ourselves, how did those nubs get left behind? And somebody's gonna go to the minutes and say, well, we just didn't want to deal with this and that, and therefore, I just feel like, it feels like the nubs should come to the town. I don't think, I would agree with you. I don't think they need to be paved. And whether we just say, okay, look, we're just gonna, because it's all still interior, we're okay with that.
There's another factor there though. Yeah, curb and gutter.
Yeah.
That would just, again, ten times the cost of, not, not any, but of chip seal. So you are accepting much more. The thought, I think, leaving the nubs there was one, we just, we leave that. And if somebody in the future wants to develop to the west, of course, they're gonna have to dedicate those street, that, the rest of the streets that not dedicated, they, they dedicate that. Build the improvements, the sign will have to be the water and sewer. And that would be required, and more than likely required, that they extended past any other developments.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, this, oh, this was an example, developers in the room, so it's, it's not apples for apples, but we did something similar on block two with this J Street portion where we left a part of block two to be developed. It didn't make sense for the developer to extend it to the back lot, I don't know what lot number this is, lot nine. Mr. Goodrich was the developer on this one. Didn't make sense for that to be in for just the subdivision on the west side, but it'll absolutely be needed any through their subdivision of block two. The one thing that Mr. Goodrich did make sure he do in that subdivision is there is a provision of the easement for those right of ways that is reserved. That is, I do see that in his plat.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because at this point, ten years from now, whoever comes over and develops the property may not want to give us an easement, may not. I mean, I guess, how do you? Yeah, well, they could develop, you know, you're looking, you know, you develop some parts of it to one degree or another, but, because that could be a driveway and then they could just make that their private driveway and develop something on the backside.
No, subdivision.
Okay.
Not, not your approval.
Okay, did, you know, it's funny what happens sometimes. I feel like we're cleaning up a lot of things and I like, I agree with you, the, the, the letter's there, but I just wonder if it's cleaner to deal with it today and not make it somebody else's problem tomorrow. And even if it was just the provision of the easement so that we know that it will be there tomorrow, for example. Because I don't think, I would agree, I don't need a chip seal, those are just straightforward. That's, I just want to make sure that in the future, we're not dealing with this problem a second time.
So, yeah, my only question would be, if it does get, the entirety of that gets dedicated, what is the cost for, if it ever does get developed, would the developer be responsible for carrying the entirety of the road, even though, you know, first hundred and twenty foot is currently a town road? Or would the entirety of it just be ambiguous, you know, who knows, who, who pays that section, I guess? Is my, is my question, yes.
So I'll look to the experts.
Well, don't call me an expert, but, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is what Ed and Casey and I sat down on in trying to decipher between, how do we get through this fuzzy, confusing agreement? And I, I do think, I, I wrote a second letter to you guys that's in the front of your packet. There's two conditions written in there. I know Mr. Fairbanks kind of made an email response because it didn't get included in that. But there was two conditions that the town, if knowing full well that the chip seal is worth about five thousand dollars, the council would have to, I guess, take that one on the chin of, we screwed up by not calling a letter, a letter of credit in two thousand and seven, or eight, or whenever that should have been completed. That would be one the town would have to take on the chin, but we would recommend two comp, uh, two notes at minimum if this were to proceed as is. The first one to be, any future development of the remnant parcel shall require the developer to design and construct all of the public improvements in accordance with the town of Pinedale construction standards and development standards in effective time of such development occurs. And the second note will be, the portions of Henneck Street and North Street has dedicated the plat, just addition to the town of Pinedale, recorded in book eighty-three miscellaneous, page six ninety-four at the office of the Clerk of Subway County, are presently accepted and maintained as town streets by the town of Pinedale. Town of Pinedale should not be responsible for nor obligated to participate in any costs associated with the improvements or reconstruction of the street to town of Pinedale construction standards and development standards in conjunction with or as a result of any future development to the west. Basically, the town will maintain that street how we wish. It is a town street. The comment that Mr. Fairbanks had made to me is he wants to make sure that developer isn't necessarily saddled with the hundred and twenty feet, which was the intention of these notes. So I think there's a slight revision that we would need to put in to say the developer isn't responsible for that hundred and twenty feet either. But this is a public street, town street. We will maintain it how we are, we desire to, but we are not obligated to bring it up to some.
des- desire to, but we are not obligated to bring it up to some current standard or anything that, outside of your guys' desire to do so, or this bench's desire to do so. That's the best we could come up for a grade, but obviously, that's.
A little shade.
Still got next.
A little shade of gray.
The issue, you know, dedicating those little nubs would be, it all goes into one pot, I guess. So it's either, you know, whose responsibility, you know, if the town was willing to take responsibility for that entire section as a dirt road and dedicated to town street, it wouldn't bother us. But it would be, I guess, beneficial to the town. You know, our, we thought it would be more beneficial to the town. If it ever does get developed, the developer would be, at least be responsible for that first, you know, furthest west, I think it's fifty foot town.
It's, I think, forty, is what I saw on this thing, but.
Yeah, that could be off, I'm sure.
Yeah. I hope you're taking good notes, Mr. Mayor. Hey, well, I, I would agree then. We can leave the nubs off. Future developer gets to develop the nubs, and then I guess we would then, if we want to, at our, at our voluntary, voluntary will develop that road or not, which I suspect we would, but.
I think dealing with legal recourse the town would have, from the standpoint of its current developments, like of this subdivision, is there is probably a legal argument to be made that the current plat as recorded is null and void, based on the minutes, since it was recorded without the improvements in place. But that's eighteen years ago.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is the, I don't know, trying to thread the needle of what makes the most sense.
Fine.
So just looking at the satellite view, whenever you even them out, like, to me, the only real road improvement, like you said, you're not gonna go full do west, right? Ever.
Well, I don't know, because you might, you know, for whatever reason, they might want to develop lots up there, in which case you might have that road that goes somewhere to that, right?
I guess. But I was thinking, if you lock them off, would you end up going all the way down to make like a loop, like a future?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like, so that there would be a road that would come up and connect Henneck West and Northwest, right?
Yeah.
Behind those properties?
Sandra also owns the property six acres on Pine Street there, within access. So in theory, if it ever was developed, it would be north-south, all the way to Pine Street.
Well, we do have that, because we have that right-of-way, that it was behind the post office or by the post office.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like eventual, like city planning future, that would just go straight north, right?
Abe, does that alley that's between Verizon and Post Office go straight north?
It does, but I believe it's.
Does it stop?
Into Lot Eight of the Fisters.
That's what I was wondering, if it ends like right there, first of all.
Yeah, and, and, but I think it's.
Yeah, Lot Eight.
Thirty feet is almost.
City planning.
It's still just an alley, because it's just one house.
You're not wrong. You're not wrong. It's definitely.
You're looking at three hundred and something feet that could be developed as an alley.
Well, I just mean, like, again, city planning.
Fifteen foot of that alley keeps going. There's like a thirty-foot alley that comes off of the highway, and it reduces down to a fifteen.
That's right.
Like a two-track?
Yep. Yeah. And it goes all up to Steve's house.
I've never maintained that fifteen-foot alley. In fact, we've never maintained the thirty-foot alley until, to my knowledge, like.
Just last year.
Or so, we went and fixed it up.
Yeah.
I don't know if it really had been touched before that.
All right, well, let's move on. So I think we all.
What we're saying is, future development, the developer would.
I don't know.
Take on that cost.
I mean, yeah, they'd have to. So, because I mean, if you look at it in the way we're just describing, if he were to come off of that line, then he's gonna be off of that. So.
Okay.
Any developer in the future would have to loop the water, would have to install sewer, would have some form of continuity of streets to get approval in that actual parcel.
So we're, we're approving now the, the lot realignment. We are leaving the nubs, for the lack of a better term, alone, and we are committing that we will not do anything necessarily in the remaining portion of blocks of the town.
I would, I would suggest that we, those two notes in there, that we allow, you know, approve the preliminary plat, subject to those being included in the final plat to be massaged.
Yep.
An applicant named Ed Wood, prior to this council term under plat.
I smell the plat. Have fun.
It's, it's, there's cleaning up another mess.
And that, exactly. And then let's just make sure we're doing good notes on this, so we know what we're doing in fifteen or twenty years when we come back around. All right.
Eighteen hours here.
Y'all are looking at me.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, before you get there.
So on this second note, you're saying that the town shall not be responsible for nor obligated to participate, to participate in any costs associated with the improvement or reconstruction of said portion of street. Is that just referring to the nub portion, or is that the entire? Because if we already own that portion, I don't see why that would be anybody else's responsibility.
It's not referring to the nub. It's referring to the current public roof.
Right.
We're allowed to do as well we will.
We're saying we could just leave it dirt.
We're not obligated.
Why would we? I, you know, I'm just, I mean, I, I think the perspective that everybody's looking at here is that this is an old problem. It shouldn't be our problem, but it is our problem today, so we're just kicking it down the field.
It's not different than a town street project. If we were going through there and made public improvements, and we decided we were gonna add curb gutter sidewalk, you guys are certainly gonna be able to decently treat your town right-of-way. Or just if the developer comes in and says, I'm gonna put an all-ten-dollar subdivision, town, you need to pay for those sections of the road. The town's like, no, it should have been solved. This isn't our problem. If you would like to pave and extend it, you may as the developer. We will allow that. Or the town is that, you know, we won't leave it dirt. We'll go add the chip seal that was originally intended, and we'll do the chip seal at that point, because we want citizens of the Town of Pinedale to have reasonable space down there.
Or if one of the landowners, owners of the lots on either side of those two streets comes in in five years and say, hey, I'm accessing my back corner of, or, oh, the back corner, and I'm accessing over there, and it's a dirt road, and it's muddy, this is town street, you need to pay for that. And what was it? One, no, we don't have to maintain town streets to any specific standard. And two, if you look at your plat where you acquired your subdivision by, it specifically says.
I don't love it. I think if it's our street, we pay for it, but I get what you're saying, because I, I do see that as being the one, the one issue that would be a big ask for a single residence. But if, if a development happens behind that, and we have a street that's been there for eighteen years, that we haven't done anything with, I think that's on us.
I don't know. I don't have a separate figure. I don't love it either, but I don't, you know, I'm outside as well.
Do that at the time. You have the ability, but not the obligation.
I would be surprised if a future council did not do that. That you're obligating a future council on that plan. I assume the most.
Obligating the town because it's a town street.
Then we should just do it right now?
Well, I don't think it makes sense to do it right now, because it doesn't go to anything, and we are storing snow on it. So I don't think it necessarily needs to be there, but in the future, I would think that that should be our expense.
I'm not gonna put one there right now, so.
I understand the idea of like, maybe can on the road, but it might be, might never be a problem. Might just always be solar parks in there, and a dirt road is.
I, if I was the owner of this property?
Yeah.
I'm jealous of you. I'd keep it.
Yeah. And I think that's what's likely to happen. I think this is not the, not the first one on the list. If some, if a developer's coming in, it's not.
Beautiful plan. All right. So can we move forward and approve the preliminary plat with the two conditions, and the final wording by the attorney and applicant? Odds all around. I think motion.
You might open that later. You can just call a condition.
Oh, I mean, I was just looking at it, like, how to word it, but yeah. Um, let's see. I move that we approve the preliminary plat, the Fister Edition First Amendment, including the two conditions in Abe's letter, and what was the, you had another piece to it?
Oh, and just that the, the final wording would be determined to get it, okay, the council, the applicant. That is my motion. Sloppy, I'm sorry. It's not my best. It's not my best word.
Yep.
Is there a second? Okay. Hey, you got it. All right. It's the move by Council on Swappert, second by Council on Loftus, to approve the preliminary plat application for the Fister Edition First Amendment identified notification, Lot One, Two, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, the Fister Edition of Creation of Lot Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen, with the two conditions cited in the report to be finally worded between the county and the applicant. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries four zero. There you go, Mr. Fairbanks. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is other town business. First up is the bond release for the right-of-way improvements at the Sublet County Hospital for Laton Construction in the amount of forty-two thousand and nine hundred dollars.
The bond on the right-of-way, the bill for a little month is required for right-of-way. Everything appears to be more.
I move that we approve the bond release for right-of-way improvements at the Sublet County Hospital for Laton Construction in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay. Moved by Council on Voice, second by Council on Swappert, to approve the bond release to right-of-way improvement in Sublet County Hospital for Laton Construction in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Item number two is a partial bond release for NC Construction, showing completion of improvements for the Par Avenue Second Edition subdivision, and require that a bond for completion of the sidewalk be maintained in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Mr. Goodrich is sitting here. He nods his head and says, yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is, does not have to be held for twelve months, like a right-of-way law. This is just a completion of the subdivision. Mr. Goodrich and his team have done a phenomenal job on building this road. I'm really happy with it. The only thing that hasn't been constructed, he got streetlights done and everything. So the only thing not completed to town staff's knowledge is the sidewalk, which is part of his variance request to be considered in the next line item. The important note is him as a developer, NC Construction is the responsible party for that sidewalk still, regardless if those lots sell, being a final plat, the developer is still responsible and holds this bond. I would recommend that that bond be just renewed at the same time for a twelve-month period, and then they would have given instructions to finish that, or renew it with you guys after that time. Is that enough time to complete the job? How much? A year?
I'm good with this. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Is that one on my hearing?
Yeah.
Please.
I move that we approve the partial bond release for NC Construction LLC, a bond ensuring the completion of improvements for the Par Avenue Second Edition subdivision, and require that a bond for completion of the sidewalk be maintained in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Very specific.
Second. Moved by Council on Swappert, second by Council on Voice, approve the partial bond release for NC Construction LLC, a bond ensuring the completion of improvements for the Par Avenue Second Edition subdivision, and require that a bond for completion of the sidewalk be maintained in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item then is the easement for NC Construction LLC to the Town of Pinedale, the approximately twenty-five foot along the north boundary of Lots One through Three of Par Avenue, allowing for public access for construction, maintenance, and placement and repair of sidewalks as conditioned within the variance acceptance for back out parking. Go for it. That's fine.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Council, if you guys recall, the deed restriction, I'm sorry, the variance for Lots One through Three allowing for places to be constructed on those three lots, required a deed restriction of the first parcel to have two units that were deed restricted affordable housing units, and it required this easement for the sidewalk for the back out parking. This is the second part of that variance application, and everything seems to be in order. I see no reason upon the acceptance of this that the town could not issue, I mean, these be recorded, but there's no reason to issue any building permits up to a fourplex on those three lots.
All right. Questions? Comments? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the easement from NC Construction LLC to the Town of Pinedale of approximately twenty-five feet along the north boundary of Lots One through Three of Par Avenue Second Edition, allowing for public access and for the construction, maintenance, placement, and repair of sidewalks as a condition within variance acceptance for back out parking lots.
All right. It's removed by Council on Voice, second by Council on Loftus, to approve and a easement for NC Construction to the Town of Pinedale, approximately twenty-five feet along the north boundary of Lots One through Three of Par Avenue Second Edition, allowing public access for the construction, maintenance, placement, and repair of sidewalks as a condition within the variance acceptable for back out parking lots. Excellent. I feel like a period in there, but I guess it has to be a motion with one single sentence. Wow. I feel like my, my infant teacher would be mad at us for run on sentences. But anyhow, any further discussion? My wife would probably, I have some corrections for this.
He said he was an engineer, nevermind.
All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Goodrich.
You'll be a kink.
Twelve, three bedroom, two bath minutes.
We are happy about this. Thank you for doing it so quickly and so well.
Yeah.
You can do it again if you want to. Just suggesting. All right. Next item on the agenda. We got Wes on the line for this. This is the discussed change order number one of the contract by HK Contractors for South GA Apron Project, a reconciliation change in the amount of forty-three thousand twenty-one dollars. Wes, go for it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, yeah, what you have in front of you is what we call a reconciliation change order. It's basically a change order at the end of the project that zero out the quantities, whether they were overruns or underruns, to kind of update the contract amount. As you can see, the amount that we need to increase the contract is forty-three thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. That's largely from some additional excavation we had to do when we got things opened up. The soils were just worse than we expected in some areas, and we had to excavate that out to get a good pavement section in there, to kind of just paint the whole picture of the project and the overall grant, because like our fund, our fees are also wrapped up in that grant. We're probably, we're still closing the project out, but looking at it probably eighteen to twenty thousand dollar underrun on our contract. So we're only gonna overrun the grant by about twenty-five thousand, and that is all federally eligible. And so the town's part of it will likely be about a thousand dollars on the match on that. It'll just be a matter of, we gotta work with the FAA on whether they can amend the grant and do it that way, or if we'll just have to take a small chunk of your guys' entitlement funds that you get at the airport every year to offset the, the overage there. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Sounds good. Thank you. I wish it was going down, but I understand. Dirt is dirt. Gotta work with it. All right. Is there a motion to approve the change order?
I move that we approve change order number one for the contract with HK Contractors for the South GA Apron Project reconciliation change order in the amount of forty-three thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty cents, bringing the final contract amount to two million four hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents.
All right. Moved by Council on Loftus, second by Council on Swappert, to approve change order number one to the contract with HK Contractors for the South GA Apron Project, a reconciliation change order in the amount of additional forty-three thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty cents, bringing the new title final contract amount to two million four hundred and eighty-one, two hundred and sixty-one, twenty cents. and eighty-one, two hundred and sixty-one, twenty cents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, you know, Abe, maybe in the future you could just put a little plus sign in front of it, or a little minus sign. I mean, I obviously read it however you want to do it, but I'm just thinking in the motion, like, just so reconciliation change could be up or down.
Usually reconciliation, you're always down, almost, this is the first one we've never done reconciliation this way.
Okay. So typically they throw me off, so that's what I thought. I thought it was going down, and I was looking at it the other night, I was like, no, it went up, so a little plus sign or a minus sign, anyway, it's like, makes it clear, so tomorrow if somebody in the public decides to read this motion, they'll understand that there was an addition to it. That's just me being OCD. All right, next item is the professional service agreement with Rio Verde Engineering for the design of sewer main replacement and water service line replacement under US one ninety-one Pine Street, be coordinated with Wyoming Department of Transportation as part of the Y dot N one three two one one three Pinedale Streets project in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand.
Mr. Mayor, this is for designing and coordination only for the front end, right now we have an ERS for the sewer to be included with the Y dot project, so we'll be amending that ERS, Y dot to include water and sewer in construction, but this is not including construction administration, which Y dot says they're going to do, but Y dot doesn't do water and sewer, so we're going to be having some conversations on who watches that getting constructed, and I just don't understand how they would expect the engineer to stamp it, if the engineer designed it, doesn't inspect it in town, so we'll be having conversations on that, like, this will get us through where we need to be until twenty twenty-eight, and then obviously at that point in time we'll have any conversations of who pays for, well, we'll have a conversation of how we pay for C and A, do we pay Y dot, or do we pay Rio? Or do we pay Rio for this aspect of it?
Okay. I move that we approve the professional service agreement with Rio Verde with Y dot for the one ninety-one Pine Street project, Y dot N one three two one one three, it's really, it just flows right up your tongue, the Pinedale Streets project, in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Moved by Council and Swappert, second by Council and Loftus to approve a professional service agreement with Rio Verde Engineering, the design of sewer main replacement and water service line replacements under US one ninety-one Pine Street to be coordinated with Wyoming Department of Transportation, as part of the Y dot N one three two one one three Pinedale Streets project in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next item on the agenda is the Western Wyoming Aviation lease and Sasso termination. Abe, I'll let you go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think this is a discussion only, you take action from the council, Western Wyoming Aviation, the Sasso agreement down in Pinedale, along with that Sasso agreement is a lease of the portion of the town's hangar for the flight school. Western Wyoming Aviation has moved their operations to Big Pine in Wyoming, last time they made a lease payment was actually the last quarter of twenty twenty-four, so they are not paying their lease payment to be in our hangar any longer, operate there, as such as we're looking at what to do with the FBO hangar and our opportunities in the future, we're just trying to clean up our leases and paperwork, because they haven't been paying their lease, that's a termination of lease, and they can't have a Sasso without the lease, I don't think there's any hard feelings there, just with the breach of contract or kind of determination of this, we felt the best for the council, update you guys, make sure at the opportunity to ask any questions you would like, review status recommendation that we terminate the Sasso and the lease agreement, clean up our paperwork for future opportunities.
Council, any questions? If they haven't made a payment since twenty twenty-four, do they owe us money?
Yeah, per the contract, they owe six hundred and some change per quarter, that's in years, so they owe us about eighteen hundred dollars, while it'd be about twenty-four hundred dollars to twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Be my recommendation, because we're, I've utilized the lease, and we have used the hangar in other ways, that we just proceed without collection, that'd be my recommendation.
Have we gotten twenty-five hundred dollars worth of hanging lease and exchange? I can think of that, but otherwise. Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, since this is published as discussion only, we'll go ahead and put it on, do we need to?
It'll just be a letter that comes with your signature.
Okay.
Mr. Water, do you have a?
Do you?
Room, letter.
We don't need a council vote on it?
I don't.
I think it's something.
It's administrative, I have to terminate it, so.
Gotcha, making certain. All right, there we go, everybody's nodded their head, proceed, I will sign when presented. All right, the next item is our business license discussion. We have had some discussion by multiple people that we need to probably have some business licenses, because we have issues going on from some businesses that we can't necessarily oversee, and we are one of the few communities in the region that don't actually have business licenses, so this gives us the ability to just kind of track. So I don't know, with something we've talked about in the past, we have an ordinance that's drafted more or less, ready to run for council, but wanted to see if anybody had any questions. Yes, ma'am.
So, how's a business license work, does it depend on how much space they take, how much they sell? Kind of?
Well, there's a lot of different ways to do it, so, you know, some communities do it by the number of employees, some people do it by, you know, so, but essentially any business that does business in the town of Pinedale would have to have a business license, so I was talking to one of the realtors who does business, because Marbleton and Big Pine have business licenses, which I think is funny that we don't, so I'm not looking at this as a gigantic revenue generator, to be really clear, so I know like, this realtor put up a sign in Marbleton, and you got contacted by the town of Marbleton saying, we need your business license paid for, so, you know, he sent his, what was it, from Marbleton?
Forty-five?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five? Thirty-five for Marbleton, twenty-five in Big Pine.
And sent him, had his business license, so it's just a way to, A, track businesses and make certain that they comply with all the different codes, they're paying their taxes like they should, that they are not selling items that they should not be selling, et cetera, so, I, like I said, I, and I would be even happy to say, like, first year, anybody who's doing business, but, you know, before January one of twenty twenty-six, or whenever we enact this, it's like a one dollar charge, just, you know, I'm not looking for cash, I'm just looking for a way for us to begin tracking these things. But to be very clear, and I've talked about this multiple times, in the past, in two thousand and eight, this hit, and people got really upset about it, so it became an issue, that said, it's two thousand and twenty-five, we've had a couple of businesses that have been really borderline, that the sheriff has been investigating and some other things, and so we just have, this would be a really easy way to clean up a couple of things, and just do it administratively, so.
It goes a long way to protect local businesses as well, especially contractors, you know, get the fly-by-line contractors who can.
That's right.
Roll through town and free someone, you know, uninsured, I mean, whatever contractor that comes through town and does a job and leaves town and is gone, before anybody realizes that there's issues, because they have to have a business license to work here, to do right-of-way, to do whatever, allow certain things like insurance and things to be checked on contractors, that gives some respect and some protection to citizens, I think that's valuable. The other thing is there are different types of businesses that have different realities about them, there are certain businesses that, the town of Pinedale, it's our legal obligation to maintain backflow prevention, backflow prevention program for high hazard backflows, right now we don't have a method of tracking and doing it, so by having that type of business license, if you're a business that has hazard backflow prevention, every year when you do your renewal, you're submitting your inspection from a certified inspector, your backflow prevention device is protecting the town's water system when you do your business license, same thing with fat oils and greases for your commercial kitchen, commercial, those areas that create those problems, it's another way you can build inside that business license, and you know that every year those things are getting cleaned and maintained, so that the first time you learn about it, it's not once through the street, because someone did clean up that one, so.
I have talked to the Chamber of Commerce about this, and when I did my presentation in general, they were agreeable, and I wouldn't say the chamber took a vote or anything like that, but just to say, the discussion was favorable.
Okay, so we heard the pros, what are the cons from the two thousand and eight conversation that shot it down?
Well, I mean, I think the number one thing is.
It's property rights?
Yeah, property rights, and, you know, you're charging, where, I mean, like, the realtor's like, oh my god, because I told them, like, well, we're thinking of doing business licenses, he's like, oh, you didn't get your hand in my towel as well, so this is idea that we're taking more of their money, I mean, I think if you, like, let's just say you charge sixty dollars a year, I mean, we're like, five dollars a month, this is not going to break anybody's back, per se, but I get it, I mean, I don't want to be, like I said, this isn't necessarily about fees and revenue generation, it's more about just administration and oversight, I think the flip side is probably like, who does the town think they are, man, it's what we do in our businesses, and, you know, we're all citizens, and all that, you, I mean, you were, you sat in the room, so whatever else did I?
Just more government overreach, what are you giving me for my money? What are you gonna do? You're just gonna try to control my business more, and you're not really the thing for me.
Yeah.
Where are you going to explain this, you're greedy to the problem?
I'm sorry?
Where are you going to explain this? You're greedy to the problem.
That's right, yeah. That, I've been planning to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've been asked before, like, if McDonald's wanted to come in or something, and someone had bought a piece of property in town of Pinedale, right on, let's say Dave's Last Stand, this is the exact scenario that was laid out to me, they come in, purchase that piece of property, and they want to put McDonald's there, they're like, well, would you go stop them? And I was like, can't.
Yeah. When Dollar General came in, how many people said, why'd you let a Dollar General in? I'm like, you know, we don't have any powers.
By the code.
Right.
I mean, as long as you abide by the code, and you never have to come to us for variance, we can never tell you no.
That's right.
This would correct that, or like a Denny's out by the Hampton that's been rumored for since I moved here, like, oh nine, but I came out on the tail end of this, so I thought it was property rights, I just didn't know if there was any other, any other cons that we.
Yeah, there's some other things that are going on, and this is part of why we're doing the gaming ordinance as well, we have a very active legislature right now, who is determining not just principle, but policy in local communities, so they are looking at passing certain laws that would, we would be forced, one of the reasons we're doing the gaming ordinance is they could pass a law, and if somebody came in and they wanted to do, you know, some sort of simulcasting thing and convert, commercial too, we couldn't say no, we would be left out, so the city of Cheyenne right now is facing the number of businesses that they have no way to say no to, because the legislature has created certain things, which is, I'm glad to see the shocked face, but yes, that is one of the things I've spent, been spending down in Cheyenne on.
My shocked face was your example, the simulcast, I guess I didn't understand what that actually was.
Yes.
That was the shocked face.
Simulcasting or historic horse racing, there was a case in.
Riverton.
Where.
I don't think, okay.
There was, you know, and the grocery store just appeared, right, and it's like, well, you can sell it, where you can run it, where there's alcohol being sold there, for they put it in the Smiths', and kids are playing historic horse racing in the Smiths' grocery store, so it's just the ability that, to say, look, you know, at the end of the day, what happens in Pinedale is decided by them, and it could be, like I said, this is not going to be, I don't think any of us are going to sit here and say, you know, I think it would be very delicate, and I think our attorney would be like, don't be making any laws against McDonald's, however, your business licenses could dictate certain things that have to be done for them.
It gives the local control aspect, that's all.
So I'm just much more sensitive to this now, having been involved as much as I have in state politics, and I just think anything we can do to strengthen our own local control on hand, issues like water and sewer, or other products being sold, it gives us the ability to do something about it, so, that's why.
And, and I know that there is at least one in Rock Springs, it's like right on the kind of the main drag on, I think it's sewer. I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't like businesses that are solely, you're just coming in and play the slot.
Well, it's, it's very difficult.
It's just strange.
In the, in the instance of gaming, it's very complicated, because, you know, like, if you look at Cheyenne downtown, they had no say, these businesses have just come in, and I think there's like eight downtown right now, the city didn't do anything about it, and it's changed the downtown district, and the local businesses are frustrated because their district has changed, and it's just like, wait a second, this is not what we that are storing this downtown for, and yet, we're stuck with it.
Yeah, and I think our downtown is, it's hyperlocal, in that people drive through and they like that, and I think you lose that if you're just allowing it to be, if three of those pop up in the next two years, it's like, well, crap.
Now, to be clear on gaming, it has to first be approved in the county.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not necessarily referring to.
Any of these businesses.
G three specifically, I mean, like, the ones, like, like my hometown in Illinois has, like, four of these. Your point, they've, I won't say stolen, but they've definitely stolen some of the feeling and the vibe of walking in downtown that's historic, you know?
Right.
So, there's my two cents.
So I know it was controversial in two thousand and eight, and yet, it seems like at this point, people have realized that there's a lot of advantage to it, so I'd like to go for it, and like I said, I'm happy to say, anybody who's in business by January twenty, January first of twenty twenty-six, you paid a buck, I'm not, I'm not looking for the money.
Yeah, I think there's, there'll be some selling at the beginning, and I think you'll have a hard, hard time, I think, getting your initial go, but I think people get used
Yeah, I mean, I think once it's getting going, and I think to the other point that, you know, Ed brought up, is what are you giving the town, well, we offer protection for certain people, like, you know, if somebody comes in and wants to do a, you know, a weekend job and take it away from a local businessman, it's like, wait a second, you didn't have a business license, so some of that can actually stop to protect local businesses as well.
Yeah, I've seen, I've heard some poor stories about some contractors.
Yep.
That's cool.
So if council is agreeable, we'll introduce the, the ordinance for first read at the next council meeting. Dot, dot, dots, all right, there we go. All right, let's go on to the next item on the agenda, it's the ordinance of the resolution, ordinance seven thirty-three, on its third and final read, building height.
All right. I move that we. Oops, sorry, I have to read this first, so hang on a second. I make a motion to approve ordinance seven thirty-three, an ordinance out of Pinedale, State of Wyoming, amending the definition of building height in chapter four seventy-five, article two, section four seventy-five, eleven.
Second.
Okay, move by Council and Loftus, second by Council and Swappert, to approve ordinance seven thirty-three on third read, in ordinance to the town of Pinedale, amending the definition of building height in chapter four seventy-five, article two, section four seventy-five dash eleven. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero, it's law. All right, ordinance seven thirty-four, also on its third read, this is the multifamily development requirements.
I move that we approve ordinance seven thirty-four on third read, in ordinance to the town of Pinedale, State of Wyoming, amending section four seventy-five, article twenty-nine, section four seventy-five, dash two forty-four M, titled multifamily development requirements.
All right, move by Council and Swappert, second by Council and Voice, to approve ordinance seven thirty-four on third read, in ordinance to the town of Pinedale, amending chapter four seventy-five, article, what did we say, twenty-nine, check section four seventy-five dash two forty-four M, multifamily development requirements. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries as well, and then for first read, and the reason it's on first read and not in discussion is because legislature goes into session. And I, just working.
So this is on the books before they go into legislature and make some sweeping statewide change?
That is correct.
Okay. This, yeah, then this would still hold, is your point?
That's. And I'll be really clear here, the ordinance is actually stating that it can't be done and not permitted in commercial C two district, we may want to come back and do a PMZ change there as well, but for terms and purposes, I think, Seth and I were like, this would carry, so.
Okay, right now, I think what you're talking about specifically is in, like, the bars?
Yeah.
Basically?
Bars.
Is that I want?
Historical horse racing, and yeah.
That's I want, no.
Well, they're.
It's not going to, the bars and the businesses that already have it in there.
They're fine.
Okay. That's the question, yeah. That was an easier way to answer it, I'm sorry, or ask it, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not really so much worried about, like, some of the machines, if that makes sense, there's just other gaming devices, it's very complicated, I got a tour of one of the facilities in Cheyenne, and it was like, when we were told what we were going into, based on what the code said and what we went into, I had to go back and reread the code and re-understand what the heck they just allowed to happen, because it was a whole lot more than what I thought was a slop, or whatever you want to call it.
Oh, yeah, well, no, like, the skill-based ones they have now, like, the reason they're set up that way is a Wyoming thing anyway, but, yeah.
It is very complicated. It is a very complicated matter. So are there any questions about this? Any discussions? Justice?
Yeah, specifically C2, but no mention of C1 district, which is the majority of our crucial district.
Yeah, it's because currently it could be allowed in C2. So we're, what I'm doing is thinking
But it can't be allowed in
Yeah, it's not allowed in C1. Could be allowed in C2 currently under our zoning. And so what we're doing by the ordinance is taking away that right to do it.
I thought I read in here somewhere, it says light industrial.
That's right.
Only.
That's right. So we're kicking it over there. So right now, the way the law reads is it could happen in C2 according to our zoning ordinances.
So the only C2 districts in town, the C2 district that exists in town is currently the BL, the Lee, the Hampton, and then the lot across, Greenfield Avenue from that's the C2.
There's actually light industrial closer into town than those C2 districts. So to be clear, I mean, like, where the cement company is, that could be, that's light industrial.
Specifically not allowed in C1 already.
Yes, right. So we're using the ordinance to get to C2. That's display first.
Move that we approve ordinance 735 on first read, an ordinance of the town of Pine Dell, State of Wyoming, creating chapter 240 of the Pine Dell Municipal Code entitled Skill-Based Amusement Games, establishing local regulations consistent with Wyoming Gaming Commission rules, and clarifying local limitations on location and authorization.
Second, discussion?
It's been moved by Councilman Boyce, Councilman Boyce, seconded by Councilman Swappert, discussion.
Okay. So if the Wyoming Gaming Commission rules change, do we have to re-adopt an ordinance, or is it a time?
No, that would be
A space and time?
There'd be a space and time, yeah. And it's more around how, not on the zoning, because what we're really concerned about is the placement and not necessarily the what, if that makes sense. For, before gaming, like historic horse racing could come into the county, the sublet county has to allow it to happen. So that's
Current.
Currently. And I think to this stage, they haven't, there's a, there's a few counties that have not allowed it. And if they did allow that, or the state legislature passed something, they could say, I mean, and the definition of what games could be played are really not ours to play with, if that makes sense? That's the gaming association's definitions, but where do we go if this word comes under our zoning or our, our So I'm playing with geography, not with description. Playing, it's not the right word. Sorry. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And well, obviously, we'll have three reads, and people can look at it, and if we need to tweak this or amend it, we obviously can't. But I just wanted to get this started sooner than later. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. I would encourage anybody who wants to to go ahead and look up any articles because this has been covered in the Gaming Commission, and the interim has been dealt with about four different meetings. So I cite the different bills that are being considered, so. Which could be amended at any moment on the House or Senate floor, so. Goes crazy ways. All right, routine business. The unedited financial report. Everybody does know that if the federal, it's noted here, but it's worthwhile saying publicly that if the federal government said done is not complete, then we will be submitting some, this is water mark draft until the final supplement is released. Because it needs that all put here, so. Questions? All right, next item is going to be presentation of the bills. Councilman?
Yeah.
Just got to get there.
Two twenty-two.
Two twenty-four. Oh, you're right.
I move that we approve the bills for November 10th, 2025 in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, paid with checks three one nine one seven through three one nine five two.
Okay, moved by Councilman Boyce, seconded by Councilman Swappert to pay bills for November 10th, 2025 in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, checks number of three one nine one seven through three one nine five two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. Next item is an executive session to discuss litigation. We will be retiring, it could be the conference room to discuss this. I don't think there's any action that follows after this, so we will probably end the broadcast now and just close within a German when we finish, which shouldn't take terribly long. This is not a big deal. But again, I
Okay, I move that we enter executive session for purposes of discussing litigation.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilman Swappert, seconded by Councilman Loftus to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. Chelsea, you joining us? Yes, she is.